Call a meeting of the Village of North Hudson Regular Board Meeting to order. It is Thursday, November 4th. It is, let the record show, at 7:04. And I would ask the clerk, she will take, please take the role.
Trustee Catherine?
Here.
President Klein?
Here.
Trustee O'Brien Bergman?
Here.
Stanford?
Here.
Thomas is absent. Wecken?
Here.
And Zappa is absent.
Any view? Item number two on the agenda is to review and approve of the minutes of the regular board meeting of October 5th. I hope that you all, that all the board members have taken a look at these minutes. And I would ask first for a motion to approve them, and then we can talk about any adjustments.
I'll move approval of the regular minutes from our meeting on 5 October.
Thank you, Darrell. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion? Any recommended improvements? Edits? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the board minutes from October 5th, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Foe's same sign. Item number three, this is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, or opportunities that are not on today's agenda. And I believe we have Dolly here, who wants to give us a little update on the pill back, pill back program, is that?
It's called prescription takeback.
Prescription takeback. Would you please use the podium? And for the record, just indicate your full name and address.
My name is Dolly Falls, and I'm 7:50 East Tarryville. Anyhow, I'm here just to kind of give you an update. I have an email that I got from our next chair. He said at chief's meeting, 10:14, I got fixed all the police departments of the county. He said from Lemon City and Star Prairie to participate in prescription medication collection program in 2011. Also, the same meeting was the consensus of the chiefs that the items that will be collected will be the same items that were collected in the nationwide collection program on September 25th. Funds to operate the program remain intact in our 2011 budget pending final approval. Okay? Dale says yes. Okay, the police departments are reaching out to local schools in an effort to get shock passes to build a container for them. This is also seen as a way of getting by with the program with the local students and schools. Now, we're waiting to learn more about the federal government funds for disposal pass of 2011. Is there rumors that may be happening? I've been trying to keep really close tabs on that, and I'm hearing two stories now, one that there's going to be two collections next year, and one story that maybe just one. But right now, I got a call from Herb Cole's office, I think yesterday, and there's supposedly some talk now about some incinerator in Milwaukee that's going to be equipped to be able to dispose of these, you know, incinerate these drugs, rather than having to go to the Viola one in east St. Louis, Sager, Illinois. For us, I guess it's going to be a horse of pieces to how far it would be. It's looking really, really good. There's a lot of interest. We're, you know, kind of a little bit late in St. Croix County, because Dunn County, Pierce, and Eau Claire County have already had the programs now for a couple of years. And then Marshall, Wisconsin, which has been my mentor, they've been at it now about five years, and it's working very, very well. I guess I'm more inclined to answer questions. Oh, on October 12th, Obama signed the Secure and Responsible Drug Disposal Act of 2010. And in that, now there's language, and I've read it so many times, and I still don't get it all, but the Attorney General's support, or office, I guess of the US, is supposed to be looking at it now to see if they can come up with some better ideas of how to handle this and make it easier. And then now, I heard that the federal register, the DEA is asking for federal register comment, and I don't know when that'll start. I keep checking the DEA website, and I haven't seen anything about it yet. But I know they're looking for options, is what can they do to get more people to, you know, two things, keep it out of the groundwater and keep it off the streets, make people safe. I mean, there's, you know, one is not more important than the other, but it all boils down to saving lives. And so, so if you have any questions, I have two minutes and 36 seconds. I can talk fast, and those of you that have seen me before know I can. So, update on the city of Hudson. Their box is well along in progress. It's being worked on, Mr. Clyde at the high school. I was lucky enough, I have a friend who works at Niro, and he was able to find a couple of old power boxes, well, they did, somebody, the powers that be there, that they had to remodel, the stainless steel boxes. They don't necessarily have to be stainless steel, but it has to be something secure. I mean, a good welded steel box that's, you know, painted well. And I did bring along the pictures, and I don't know, I know George has these, and so you can just keep this one here to see like what the Marshall one is, because you line it with a plastic bag anyhow and empty it, and, questions?
Mark, do you have any input on this?
No, I think she did a great job.
But as far as the village and our participation in the program?
Just that we'll be looking at trying to figure out a location for that particular box.
Thank you. Dolly, can it be wooden?
Well, one of the things that I got very clear, because I did check with my Marshall mentor, and he says probably metal, because people do, and they even put, well painted, they chose stainless steel because it's more sanitary and this kind of thing. And, but then, he said they threw a piece of carpet in the bottom, because the Marshall is great, I mean, they, they get cough syrup, they get cough drops, they get mouthwash, they get everything, because they've got, the people, well trained in Marshall. You don't throw anything away in the garbage or put it down the drain. And like he said, they have good pharmacist support, and so if they get some of those things, you know, the pharmacist can look and say, well, this is just cough syrup, it's a little sugar water, fine, run it down the drain. But, you know, if they get the bottle of hydrocodone, it's like, oops, but they take it all. But now, according to this program, Schultz was saying that they were just going to not take the liquids, but...
How do you know?
Pardon?
How do you know who's going to put something in there?
I can't hear you.
How do you know what's going to go in there? I mean, can you really?
Well, it's educating the people, the public, asking them like, now, one of the big problems is whether you're going to take controlled versus uncontrolled. Well, the controlled ones are those, that's saying the bottom of the bottle, federal law prohibits the use of whatever. And, you know, and this is why I think the trend now is going to just go all controlled, you know, it's only like 50 cents a pound difference, if you have to pay for it. And if we get lucky enough that the DNA is going to have another collection, so all we've got to do is get it in the boxes, and when the day comes, you know, all it has to do is get halved. And it's going to be important, oh god.
You did take me literally, didn't you, Dolly?
One of the things that's going to be really important, that all like in St. Croix County goes agroup, and because the big cost is the incineration fee, like right now at East St. Louis, there's an $1,800 witness burn fee. Well, I've talked to Viola until I can't talk to her anymore, and they said, you're crazy here. St. Croix, you take your stuff to Don, and Don, you go to Eau Claire, Pierce, join them down on 10 someplace, then next year, you just take it there and put it in a van, because you've just got pills now, you can get rid of all the bottles. And I did see too, Viola, and I was taking those brown pill bottles for recycling. But anyhow, and it has to be law enforcement supervised, and then Viola has, it's usually in October, they have a collection day, someplace in Jefferson County, Jefferson, Wisconsin, somewhere, and talking to the guy, I said, you're crazy if you don't join us, because $1,800, they said when they started out, I think they had 10 communities that did it, now they're up to 30 some, where you put 30 into $1,800, you're talking only 60 bucks a community. Plus, then you've got to pay some transportation costs and all that kind of stuff. So anyhow...
Thank you, Dolly.
George let me into this being the last one. So, anything I can do to help, this is the ongoing thing now for about two years for me, and I'm not going to quit until it's done.
It'll probably never be done, Dolly, so...
Very nice community service, thank you very much.
Well, it'll be done soon as we can get it set up. When I see how well Marshall has done, and Walgreens, you can go and buy an envelope for $2.99 and stuff, stuff in it and send it to Texas.
I'm sure there's logic to that, too.
Well, the whole thing is, is, like I said, if we have a program, nobody's going to go to Walgreens and pay $2.99, and you can dump it someplace for free.
Right.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Dolly.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have anything that I'd like to say to the board? Next on the agenda, there's an echo, yeah.
I think you got it.
Thanks, Joe.
I think the door shut, so it won't echo, hopefully.
Sure.
Item number four on the agenda is new business from the board or staff, and the first one is president's comments. In the interest of keeping, we have quite a bit on the agenda tonight, but what I do want to do is take this time to acknowledge the village staff, specifically Gloria and Becky, for the outstanding work that they did regarding our recent election. This place was really humming for quite a while. Becky indicated to me it was midnight when she finally got home, Tuesday night, or would that have been Wednesday morning?
It might have been a minute or two.
On top of, on top of getting all the, making sure that our election went smoothly, it was also their responsibility to put together these board packets. And later on in the meeting, Gloria is going to be talking to us about the budget that we're going to be recommending that you approve, so it can go to the newspaper. And then we will be having a public hearing on it on November 30th. So, again, I want to acknowledge the hard work that our staff has put into getting the budget, getting, making sure the budget and everything else went smooth on that, as well as the election. And so I thank you, and I believe a round of applause is appropriate.
Thank you.
Take a bow, ladies. Gloria, administrator's comments is next.
I am going to save that for the budget.
Very good, thank you. Becky, being a clerk, you have an opportunity?
My comments were really just to kind of recap the election for everybody briefly. It was a good election, we had more participation. In North Hudson, we had just a little under 1,500 voters that came through, so we're over 50% of the eligible voters here. We had a number of people coming in to register that day, which kept us quite busy, but everything went really smoothly, and my hats off to the people who volunteer and work those elections. It's a, it's a really interesting experience, but it's tough work, so I just want to tell them that I appreciate that as well, and that's about all I have.
And a special thanks to Hattie for the wonderful cake.
Yes, absolutely.
Hattie always comes through for the delicious morsels. And an apology, we had a special board meeting on Monday, and we actually held up the crew from setting up for about a half hour later than what they had anticipated, and I apologize for that. So, yes, it's been a very busy place this week. Okay. The next item is one that, well, it's a topic of recognition, and I'm a firm believer in recognizing people who do outstanding work. You may recall that back in August, I recognized the chief, our chief of police, for an article that made the front page of the Hudson Star Observer, Bees Bring Down North Hudson Man. And I remember holding up the newspaper and saying that in the very near future, we would be recognizing him more formally. I would now ask the chief to meet me at the podium.
I guess we need to hold the microphone here. As I said, it's always a pleasure to be able to recognize people who do outstanding service for the community, and the chief, of course, is no exception. When I talked to Mrs. Waters about the situation with the bee sting, she was just overwhelmed. She said, "I was still on the phone when the chief arrived." "I was still talking on the phone when the chief arrived," and I think she said, "You jumped the fence." I think that was an exaggeration, but, okay. But we still recognize that, and in honor of that, and in that recognition, we have a special pin. And Mark has been able to present this special medal to a couple of our officers on a previous occasion, and now it's my, my privilege to be able to present it to you, Mark, and I want to thank you on behalf of the Waters and the community. To me, this demonstrates that our police department does a lot more than just hand out parking speeding tickets and running red lights. This is what our police department does for us. Mark, she told me that you got to the scene in less than two minutes, if I remember that correctly.
That's correct.
And I want to shake your hand and thank you very much on behalf of this whole community.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say, besides thank you?
I guess I will, just briefly, I did not prepare a speech by any means. One of the things that George and I, or that I struggled with when George talked to me about this, was the fact that I was just doing my job, that that is what I'm hired to do. I respond to medicals all the time. This happened to be a special circumstance with, with an allergic reaction. But behind me, very shortly behind me, was the crew from Hudson EMS, and I can tell you that, as George grabs the plaque, they are as much a part of that life-saving effort as I was just being the first responder. I got there, I got information, we had the EpiPen in hand for the department, but really, it was their aftercare and their continued care, getting him to the hospital and making sure that he was cared for there and got the advanced care that really made this a life-saving effort. So I appreciate the honor, and George, I think, mentioned to me that basically, he likes to honor when people do their job well, and, and I appreciate this medal, as I gave it out a couple of months ago to my, my officers. It's one that we don't take lightly. We are very honored by this, and I will wear it proudly on my uniform. So, thank you to the community.
This is a certificate of recognition for life-saving efforts, and I'll read what Mark composed. This certificate is awarded to the Hudson Emergency Medical Services Department personnel that responded to 1106 Bald Eagle Road North on Tuesday, July 13, 2010, and provided medical services which resulted in the saving of a life after an allergic reaction from a bee sting. Without the intervention of the personnel listed below, the outcome would have been dramatically, excuse me, drastically different. The Village of North Hudson Board of Trustees would like to recognize, and then we have the four names, Jared Borowich, Chris Kustrich, Jennifer Kernan, and Mark Vandessandy, for saving a life and to commend their daily service to his community, this community, given under my hand this fourth day of November 2010. And I'll hold that. Now, this is the photo log. The best part.
We will be delivering this in person to the EMS in the very near future.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, what's the normal response time for EMS?
Without having the data in front of me, I, basically, their first response unit, which is their paramedics, are typically on scene in our village anywhere from five to seven minutes. Yeah, usually they're, they're on our heels. We get there in roughly two minutes, and they're five to seven minutes.
The fact that you were here, and it's certainly very exceptional that we were able to respond in two minutes.
Which is the time it took Mark to jump out from behind his desk, grab the EpiPens, hop in the squad, burn around the corner.
If you timed it, if you timed it, you know, over a, if you had to do that again, it might take you longer than that. It was probably a very short timeframe for that particular activity. I'm just saying that the person's very, very fortunate.
Sure, and on average, our officers, you know, if they're not on another call, that's, I mean, we're a mile by a mile point one. Lights and siren doesn't take very long to get anywhere in the village, so that is a fairly average response time on an emergency, so.
I'm just saying, in that case, you know, it's hard to tell what a person's reaction or allergic reaction would have done in another five minutes. That's kind of my point. Thank you, George.
Those are the fun parts of this job.
Good that you have some of this.
Yeah, we do.
Item number six, public hearing, and this has to do with the Storm Sewer Utility Fund. I believe we need a motion. Tom, do we need to read that entire, we just need a motion to go into public, to open a public hearing?
Yep.
Okay. I would request that one of my colleagues makes a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you, and this is a public hearing regarding ordinance 8-2010, amending Chapter 94 Utilities, Article 4, Storm Sewer Utility, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, don't wait for the period, because it's right at the end.
Guys. The ordinance that we have in front of us is long indeed, and I would ask if there's anyone in the audience out there who would like to address the board on this topic, now is your time to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rick Anley, I'm over at 910 and Roll Street North. A couple of questions, I guess, I understand what the state's done with stormwater, and I've taken a couple of classes. My question is, why the establishment of the fee? When it was always done with the general fund, and the village is very inadequate with storm sewer. We have a lot of places that just sit as holding ponds, as one of our engineer loved to make. So I guess I'm asking to the board, what prompted the ordinance, and why establishing a fee?
Do you like to, yes, sir? Thank you, Kevin.
Cedar Corporation, village engineer, and basically, been working on this for, I'd say, about a year. And the main driving force with the stormwater utility is try to bring in some of the non, or taxis and parcels, like the churches, the schools, just because typically, with those businesses and school districts and things, they have a lot of impervious area. So they're typically one of the bigger contributors to, to the storm sewer. And instead of trying to take it out of the general fund, it would be a, a way to have a fund that's available, let's say if there's some, classic example was the highway project that just took place here last year. It was roughly about $30,000 some thousand worth of catch basins, storm sewer improvements. Instead of the village having to, you know, go out and fund those projects, or have to take dollars or borrow for those, there would actually be a designated fee that they could, they could use, sort of like the sewer and water, sanitary sewer and water mean, kind of a sinking fund, same, same scenario, if there's a street reconstruction project, instead of assessing those parcels, you would have, you know, a fund available that you could, and that's for replacement, that you could take those dollars out of, instead of having to borrow for.
Well, but the village has always, always paid for its storm sewer from the general fund.
Yep.
Because if you look at the stormwater system in the village, it's really grossly, it's, let's say it doesn't come close to other cities or villages of its size. You have huge areas draining, the single catch basins, you have ponds without overflows, you have a flat system that runs past Mama Maria's and under the highway, across to the holding pond. I guess, I'm trying to understand why it's thought that we'll need another fee on our water bill to pay for a system that's fairly inadequate, and I don't see any future of where you're going to improve it.
I guess the biggest driving force when we are going through the whole entire process is, a lot of the fee that's been looked at is more geared towards the maintenance items, not necessarily the capital improvements. I know Gloria's kind of put together, and Mark, obviously, too, it's kind of looked at previous years, how many dollars that they're spending towards storm sewer, and if you look at that list, it ranges between $30,000 to $50,000. Fairly, you know, fairly decent substantial cost, and that's kind of the driving force, too, is to have that fund available, you know, to take those expenses out of the general, the general budget, and have an allocation towards it.
That fee was derived based on our experience over multiple years, as Kevin just indicated. Out of that fee, there will be some salaries, some salary money will come out of that, as well as the routine maintenance, and to build up a fund for those emergency situations. Now, we had an advisory election, or an advisory referendum on the, on our ballot this year, or on Tuesday, and it came as a big surprise to most of us, that the monies that were supposed to be put into a transportation fund were being siphoned off for things other than transportation. And so this was an advisory referendum. No, if we put money aside for transportation fees or transportation costs, then that's what it ought to be, ought to go to. This Storm Sewer Utility Fund will be only used for the purposes of the maintenance of stormwater. We had a situation here after the Helen Street project was finished, in which we had this board, I was on the board, when we had a capital out, not a capital, we had an outlay of over $35,000, so that we could take all the contaminated hard materials out of Lake Maloo and cart them over to a landfill in Eau Claire. It's for situations of that nature that we're trying, going to try to build up a fund.
Okay, I, and I was on the board when we established the sewer and water. I guess I'm still asking, then my other question, I have one more question, is what's the fee? You have an ordinance, but I see nothing that establishes the fee.
There's another document in our packet that actually established the fee at $7.25. So it's a total of $28 a year for each resident.
Yeah, which is, which is good, and I don't doubt, my question to the board, or not question, is, quote to the board is, I've been around the village for a lot of years, I served some years on the board.
Yes, you have.
And when the board changes hands, things that were, you thought in, 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 in other words, where's the fee going to? It's $7.25 a quarter now, but what's more? I don't see the difference in the whole thing if I take it out of the general fund or I take it out of a separate fund. My feeling with, with fees like this, and I, I voted in favor of sewer and water. I felt that was something that we should do, and then we, the ordinance was destroyed with St. Croix Station. I was also on the board when we established St. Croix Station. The lawyer told us it was foolproof. Well, so I guess I'm just nervous when you establish a fee, because it's $7 this year, and if you have a big outlay next year, then we're going to make it up right away? I mean, I know this board says no. I think you're doing a great job with a lot of things. I've just seen the fees go.
I'll come back to something that Kevin said earlier. With this, those non-taxable properties will now be paying their quote-unquote "fair share" when it comes to stormwater treatment.
Which is how many, three to four parcels in the village? Am I wrong?
Look at the size of those parcels, though. One of them is the school, and the other one is a very large parking lot right across the street over here, in front of the church.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, those are the two that I think of, and if you think about the school, you know, I just...
But we're also, there's another piece to this, too, and that is the business establishments that have large parking lots. Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but you will be evaluating each and every one of those businesses and the amount of impervious surface, and they will be, now, for you and me, for our homes, it'll be $7 or $28 a year. For the, for those businesses, it will be more, and it'll be based on that impervious surface.
Which, again, I think is, most businesses, larger businesses, pay higher property taxes, which to me can roll. But those were my questions.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I have another comment, and I think we alluded to it, but I just want to make sure that anybody listening in understands that this is not double taxation. The monies that are collecting under this, it's an ordinance, I'm not sure, yeah, under this ordinance, are going to be set aside for that specific purpose, and those funds that we had been budgeting for in the general fund, we will no longer budget for. And so we're not setting the budget based on... And so we're not setting the budget based on that. We're taking those monies out, we won't be taxing people, it won't occur on the tax levy or anything, it's just these dollars.
Okay, my response to that is, I understand that. But my question is, when budget comes, you guys will kill yourselves trying to keep it down, and, and it, it's a lot of work. A fee is there, and can be raised very easily. It happens. I've seen, I realize the Hudson Water Utility, which does a great job, great service. It's sort of my field of endeavor. But I've watched our water bills come out of sight. I've watched them take the sewer charge and include it into our water bill. And a residential water bill in the Hudson area now is no longer easy to pay. And that's my concern. We establish fees, and they're much easier to raise, and when you're scraping with the budget, you know, while we don't have storm sewer, that's a fee, so now we've got to spend X number of dollars. I just don't see where it saves the taxpayers any money. That, it was my concern.
Rick, I hope you'll stay around while we talk about the budget, because hopefully you'll be pleased with what we've been able to do.
The village, in all the years I was here, and years ago, I watch you guys on TV all the time. It's easier than coming down here, I can wear my T-shirts. I know what you go through trying to keep costs down. I don't think, in ninety-five percent of the cases, or even more, the village is always responsible for what they spend, and you agonize over dollars. I'm not, I just think when you establish your fee, and people change, and boards change, I, I am concerned. That was my concern.
I understand.
But you know, on the other hand, is I think that, that in, I think we should encourage people like yourself to come forward at any time, whether we have a public meeting, or any time we have a board meeting, and speak your mind about budgeting efforts or anything like that. That's when we, we hear from the population, and, and hopefully we can explain it. And if not, you can certainly, you know, hold us accountable for the, the actions of the board, or the committees, or whatever ordinances we pass. I think ultimately, that's the only way that, that, that people can interact with the board, and make sure that we're doing those kind of things right. That's why you're here this evening, and I just would encourage more of that, if people are concerned.
I think you'll find concerned people, the first statement they get, the fee on that. Not that you haven't given everybody plenty of chance to read it.
I know, it has, yeah, it has a lot to do with trust, as to who's here. And if that trust evaporates, then we're going to see a lot of people here.
Gloria?
And just so you know, I'm not exactly sure what date that the sewer user fee was established, and that was a requirement of the DNR. I know that since I've been here, and I'm completing, going on my eighth year in March, there has not been any, any increase in that fee from the village, and, or the surcharge fee. We have, when we look at other neighboring communities, as far as the cost, we are well below everyone else. And, and that is our goal, is to, to give people relief. And it, it may seem like it's moving from one pot to the other, but it allows us also to reduce it out of that tax levy, and to be able to give you a zero percent increase in, on the village side of the levy.
Okay.
But thanks, Rick.
I appreciate the, your input too, I appreciate anybody's input on this, because it always gives us something else that we need to think about, consider, if it hadn't been considered previously, so. All right, is there anyone else from the public who would like to make a comment? Doug, you're a member of the village, would you like to say anything about this?
Not on this issue.
All right, I would entertain a motion then to close the public hearing.
I'll so move.
Thank you, Colleen. All in favor of the motion to close the public hearing indicate by saying aye. Same sign. Next item is the adoption, or possible adoption of ordinance eight dash two thousand and ten. Amending chapter ninety-four utilities approval requested, then, so that we can open the discussion from the board, I'd ask for a motion to adopt ordinance eight dash two thousand and ten.
Move approval of ordinance dash forty-eight twenty-two, and ordinance amending the use code for the village of Hudson, Wisconsin.
Thank you, Darrell.
You need a second?
Yeah, that would be...
Okay.
Was that you?
I, I said a second, I, I, I kind of hummed and hawed there, but I did mean a second.
Well, I noticed that. Where do you, oh, there he goes. Do you have your copy in front of you? All right, would you go back to the podium, please, Kevin? As I read every word, every nuance of this thing, a couple times, on page one, where it says section ninety-four dash three hundred and one, go down one, two, three, four, five, about the sixth row down, I see the word sanitary, and I wonder if that is accurate. In other words, failure to effectively manage stormwater affects the sanitary sewer utility operations. Is that correct, or should that not be storm sewer utility operations?
That should be storm, storm sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Storm sewer utility operations.
I wondered that same thing, but the sanitary sewer system, if, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think the sanitary sewer system is a closed system, is not?
You can get some, we do get infiltration during heavy rains, through animal coverage, stuff like that.
You can. Supposed to be closed.
If we have a flood, and, and any time we start getting high water off the lake or in the nails, that's why we seal the animal going on Riverside Drive, and, so just to make sure we don't get...
Okay. So now the question comes back, Kevin, do we want to keep it at storm sewer utility operation, or sanitary sewer utility operation, or does it mean both?
My eyes, I think you could look at it both ways, between storm sewer and sanitary.
And I agree with Becky, that you continue the sentence, it says, among other things, increasing the likelihood of infiltration and inflow into the sanitary sewer system. Now, I just want to make sure that we're clear on this, before we agree on it, and then later on have to go back and say, oh no, what we really meant was. So if we really mean sanitary, I'm fine with that.
I mean, I can see Mark's point with sanitary.
As I read this, I think it's supposed to be sanitary.
Okay, all right, all right.
You'll get a high water situation, you can't affect sanitary, so it's...
Very good.
Because I think that's just what he said, infiltration.
And that's fun, just want to have it...
Question, yep.
On the next page, ninety-four dash three zero four, item number two B, talks about the director means the public works director. We all know that's currently Mark.
Yes.
Now, what's your title again, Mark?
Which one do I tell about the codebook? What I have in the village that you guys pay me under is actually supervisor, but also in the codebook I'm on is commissioner and superintendent and director. And I'll tell you, out of most municipalities, getting rid of the word supervisor, commissioner, and superintendent, in most municipalities are all straight directors, which makes it a lot simpler.
Thank you.
It's like one municipality calls together, they're all exactly the way they want it.
You've just given us something else that we need to take a look at in our codebook, and that's to clean up some of that verbiage as well. Anybody else on the board want to discuss any of the nuances? Tom, did you, did that mean you had something that...
No, but I, I was going to just comment, following up on what Kevin said earlier, and, and the comments about the fee. And there is a calculation for non-residential, and how he's going to go through and calculate that for these commercial properties.
If you want me, I can just kind of summarize.
Please do.
Basically, what we've done is have, we have four different classifications within, within the village, and that is under ninety-four dash three oh seven. Single-family residential is just your typical, single-family homes. And they've been dedicated one, one ERU. Then you have limited multiple residential, which is your duplexes, triplex and fourplexes. And through our process, we've determined that there will be a factor of point six ERUs times the number of dwelling units. So if you have a duplex, you will be charged one point two ERUs. From there, we have multiple, or full multiple residential, and that's anything over, or five or more. And those are determined on, basically, the best available information, and that is an aerial photography map. We've gone through throughout the whole community, and actually looked at those individual parcels, and determined, from tracing out on, well, our computer, AutoCAD, to come up with a total amount of ER, or total amount of impervious area. And then you divide that by what one ERU is, which is thirty-five hundred square feet. So you take total impervious area, measured for each individual parcel, divided by thirty-five hundred, to come up with that particular parcel's ERU.
When we talk impervious, we're just talking about the ground surface itself.
It's going to be all the hard building.
And it does include, that's what I want to get to.
Yep.
It includes the roof of the building as well.
That is correct. So it's mainly the driveways, whether they're asphalt or gravel, patios, the rough lines, sidewalks, basically right up to the right-of-way. That's, that's basically what encompasses the hard surface. Basically, the, the areas where the, the water that comes, that falls cannot infiltrate into the ground, is about what it wants to. And then from there, you have the non-residential, which is your commercial industrial parcels. And again, those are, are measured with the best available information that's out there. And again, we use the, the aerial map. Again, you would take each parcel, measure them, and then divide it by thirty-five hundred to come out with, with what their ERU is, and it's, should mention that it is rounded down to the nearest half of an ERU. So that's, that's the four different classifications within the village that's been designated. And from what I remember, the, the school was the biggest one. When we did go through and calculate it, it was roughly between forty to forty-five ERUs. If you use seven dollars per ERU, per quarter, it ends up being around twelve hundred dollars for that parcel for the year.
Comments from any of the board members? I had attended a public works meeting not too long ago. At, I think the public was, I know the public was invited to. And your colleague, Patrick, put on quite a slideshow, I believe you were here for that as well. And it was very interesting, some of the findings that we had, and a couple of the comments that he had on there, especially about why treat storm water. And it did have relation to NR one fifty-one. He did have some excellent handouts, stormwater utility information fact sheet. And the other item that I wondered if you might want to talk about, and, and Rick, this was, this was quite interesting to me too. This is the number of municipalities in Wisconsin that currently have a very similar type of program that we have here. So I just wanted to throw that out, in case anybody did want to comment on that, that we, we have even more documentation about it. All right, board, any other questions or comments regarding this topic?
I just had one question, how does this fit into the school's budget? Then we just send them a bill, or, since they haven't been billed for it before, it wouldn't be in their budget?
The, the billing per se is going to be coming through the city of Hudson's water utility. It'll be actually be a line item that's added to it. And there's obviously some parcels within the village that are not currently hooked up to the water. So those will have to be added to their database.
Do you have any rough idea of what, what, since Colleen brought it up, I wondered the same thing. What are they going to say when they get the bill? Maybe we'll...
Will they be on the list to get the letter, notification?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's part of that public information meeting.
But they haven't gotten a bill yet. And where I was going with this is, any idea, you know, round off to the nearest hundred dollars, what their bill is going to be for this, because I'm looking at the size of the elementary school, the size of the parking lot, and it's a lot of square foot, a lot of acreage.
About three hundred a quarter, I think.
Yeah, about three hundred, three hundred dollars a quarter. So totally, total of about twelve hundred dollars a year.
We pay for that too, don't we? Take a switch pocket, exactly.
I just thought I'd mention that before somebody else did.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else? To be on the safe side, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on the motion that Darrell made, and Joe seconded. So I'll start with, anybody else have any before I go? Okay. Colleen?
Yes.
Joe? George, yes. Darrell?
Yes.
Stan?
Oh.
All right, motion passes, one, two, three, four, one. Thank you, Kevin. Next item has, is a resolution allowing for the posting of village board meeting minutes. And I was pretty sure I had a... Where are we? Yeah, here we go. Where, okay, I forgot where I actually saw that in here.
I think it is, where do they see it?
It's right behind me.
Oh. Resolution two zero one zero twelve, resolution directing posting in lieu of newspaper publication pursuant to section nine eighty-five point zero five of the Wisconsin statutes. Matter of fact, I do remember reading the backside of this, which has, in your packet, which has the statute that iterates why, how we can go to this. The finance committee in preparing the budget was looking at how much we pay the Hudson Star Observer for some of these things, and can we cut back on that? And so I assume that you've all read this, the wherashes. And you see the amount there is approximately four thousand dollars per year for publishing the village board minutes. Gloria, did you want to address this before we go any further, or you think it's self-explanatory?
Well, I was wondering if you'd like to let the public, the viewing public know that, where they can find these postings. That it's, that it's also available on our website, and... And now Becky, will these be posted in the three locations in addition to the website?
Actually, what maybe I can do is have someone read the resolution in its entirety, and that will clarify a lot of things, and then we can discuss it if you'd like. Joe, you wanna read it?
Sure.
Is this gonna be your motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number two thousand ten dash twelve, a resolution directing posting in lieu of newspaper publication pursuant to section nine eighty-five point zero five, Wisconsin statutes. Whereas, the Village of North Hudson currently publishes its condensed village board meeting minutes in the Hudson Star Observer at a cost of approximately four thousand dollars per year. And whereas, Wisconsin statute section nine eighty-five point zero five parentheses one does not require newspaper publication for the Village of North Hudson, generally because there is no newspaper published in the village, in the sense contemplated by the Wisconsin statute section nine eighty-five point zero one five. And whereas, the village board finds that the additional cost of newspaper publication is not warranted in circumstances where newspaper publication is not required. And whereas, the Village of North Hudson also posts said minutes on its website and will post at least three additional public, will post in at least three additional public places within the village in order to give notice to, notice to persons affected. Now therefore be resolved by the village board of the Village of North Hudson pursuant to section nine eighty-five point zero five parentheses one, Wisconsin statutes. It is directed that all village board meaning, board minutes shall be posted on the website and in at least three public places likely to give notice to persons affected dated this day, fourth, fourth day of November two thousand and ten.
Any questions by the Board or the public?
Can I make a comment, Charlie?
Oh, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Please do, Doug, would you use the microphone?
I'm Doug Stolberg, seven twenty-two, Tenth Street North, and I'm also editor of the Hudson Star Observer. Just a couple of things I'd like to point out. You know, I commend you for, of course, trying to cut the budget, that's always a noble effort. But of course, I do have some interest in the newspaper and the things, too. Just a couple of things. First of all, the legals serve a purpose that, that I think is noble, in that it kinda has the nuts and bolts of the meetings. As good a job as I do in reporting these meetings in the newspaper, I do not get down to necessarily who made motions, who was in attendance at the meetings. So there's some of that information that the public will not have access to if the minutes are not published. The other thing I, I questioned, I went and looked, did some research on that number of four thousand dollars. From what I can see, about half of that was spent on the publishing of minutes. There was also ordinances and some other publications that were necessary for the village. In fact, last year, I think there were five pretty huge ordinances that were published that accounted for twelve or thirteen hundred dollars of that amount. And I'm guessing those were required publications for those ordinances.
Doug, it, to your knowledge, and I have Tom sitting next to me here, is it required that we publish the entire ordinances, all the ordinances in their entirety?
Well, I, the ordinances, I'm not familiar with the legal ramifications of those ordinances. That, a lot of times, those are situations where you have to publish something once, twice, or three times possibly.
I could look for the specifics, but I think generally ordinances are to be published, although if they're lengthy, you do have the ability to, you know, simply say that they're available for viewing at the village hall. I can't remember which ones are which, but typically, typically they are published. But there is an option, I think, you know, for example, if you re-codify your ordinances, you're not required to publish them all in the paper. You can simply say, well, they're gonna be available at the village hall, and if you'd like to look at them, you can come there to look at them.
You know, along those lines, I look at the, I look at the ordinance that we just passed regarding the stormwater utility. And it's, well, we didn't number the pages, but let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight pages long.
Correct.
And I can't see us, you know, if the law does not, if the statutes don't require us to publish an eight-page document.
Sure.
I sure would like to save the taxpayer.
Sure, that's an area where you could have some savings.
And the, the other issue that we have with our minutes is our, our minutes are much lengthier than they are required to be. We have, what we include is discussion items and-
That was one thing I was gonna suggest. In fact, Darryl, you may be familiar, St. Craig County went down the same road here, what, within the last year or so. And I think we had a discussion with the county, and they decided to publish a condensed version of the minutes. Went from a half-page down to probably somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen or twenty column inches, which was considerably less money than what they were spending. So that might be something to consider in order to keep the message before the public eye. Again, those, the editing down would make a lot of sense.
Just to point out to the Board, too, we do already publish a condensed version of our village board minutes in the newspaper. And we do eliminate most of the discussion in the item, in the, the version that is published. It, it basically is just the motions, but it is the motions. But we already are removing basically all the discussion from the item that is published in the paper.
And it is required for us to put the, to publish the ordinance, and it actually doesn't become law until it's published.
Correct.
But we do also not publish word for word, we say that it's available at the hall.
Now, minutes, I realize are, you're, you know, that's at the discretion of the Board. And, but I, I guess I would encourage you to try to continue publicating, publicating those in some form or another. Could be a shorter version. Again, as a newspaper man, I'm looking out for the interest of the readers, so thank you.
Before you go away, Doug, that number that we had in here, four thousand, that was a savings, that wasn't, the total was actually, what, almost seven thousand?
It's almost, year to date, almost seven thousand dollars, so.
But the, the minutes are only about twenty-one or twenty-two hundred of that, that total.
And we're not done.
Well, that's going back to November first of last year. So.
I'm not sure if, sometimes they get published in a group, and then sometimes it's delayed, so I'm not exactly sure how.
Well, I think it's duly noted, they've been a good discussion. Like to call a motion.
Thank you.
Oh, Rick has a comment.
Just a simple one, as avid reader of the paper, I follow your exploits with the paper. People are busy, and when you're a computer illiterate like I am, you must read it in the paper, or you won't find it out. And it's hard for a lot of people when they go to work to come home at six at night, you're not open. And they leave at five or six in the morning, which I did for years. Always, I always, maybe I'm an oddball, I always read all village proceedings in the paper every week. My name was Rick Hanley.
Still is, Rick.
We can get that published in the paper, I think, too. Thanks, Rick.
And just to clarify that, you know, we are also suggesting here that, that it would be posted in three locations in the village. And generally, that is the riverbank, you, generally, we actually publish them in four places, including the village hall, the riverbank, the Freedom Station, the laundromat. So if you didn't get the paper, or you didn't have time to come to the village hall, you would have an opportunity to visit those locations as well and see the minutes.
And if somebody wanted their own copy, could we come to you, Becky, and would you make them a copy of the meeting minutes?
Absolutely, yeah.
And they're posted right out here on the bulletin board?
Currently, the minutes are not. They're on the website. But they would be.
They would be posted right out here on our, on the bulletin board in the entryway, wouldn't they?
We sure can do that, yeah.
I thought you said there were four places, the village hall, is, are you, I, I'm just clarifying here.
The resolution refers to the three places other than the village hall, but we, we certainly can publish them and post them here in the village hall. Would be the fourth location.
Would be the, a fourth location, but that's also done on our website.
Correct.
Okay, was what you were implying, okay. But we could publish it out here.
Darryl?
In the interest of full transparency here, I guess I would take you to blame or credit whichever is warranted here for raising this subject. And Doug, it's exactly on the point that you indicated, and it was the very condensed version. And when we, I was looking at the eight thousand dollars, I just felt that there were some opportunities for some savings somewhat analogous to what we did at the county. I would point out to my colleagues on the Board that this resolution does not prohibit, if you'll read the last paragraph, does not prohibit the publishing of the very condensed, the action item, bullet point items in the paper. And I do think that is continued to be warranted. You'll recall, when I brought this subject up, I didn't advocate eliminating, publish the condensed minutes. I said, I think we oughta publish condensed minutes, not the length of the minutes that we do. So the discussion just went a little farther than what I had envisioned, and that was to cease publication. This resolution, which I still am in favor of, does not prohibit exactly what Doug is suggesting, what the county has done, and that's where I thought the savings were. So I still will vote in the affirmative on the resolution and suggest that we continue to publish a very abbreviated condensed version in the paper.
Then we really don't need the resolution. That's just, we just can do some even smaller, if that's what the Board chooses to do. I guess on the, the tail of what Darryl had said, I had said, well, by state statute, we don't, we're not required to. And then there was the discussion of how, you know, would that be of value and of not to publish it at all? And so we're bringing it back forward for the Board to make that decision.
Well, do we currently post the minutes in three public places in the village? Do we currently do that?
No, we do not.
Therefore, I think, I think the resolution is fine, I would like to see that done.
In addition to the website, in addition to the newspaper?
Sure, why not? I, I, I think that's fine. I don't have any problem with the resolution. I was just trying to save money from publishing a verbatim transcript of our actions, which I would like to see much condensed and save us some money.
Would the condensed version be the one that's also posted, then?
Guess I would leave that up to our administrator.
I think we could have the full set here, but I would, I mean, we're gonna be paying Public Works to go pace, go post it. We're trying to save by not I think that if we're gonna continue to do a condensed one in the newspaper, that we shouldn't post it and throw it on. But that's my feeling.
Question, do we do a condensed version? Would, would the condensed version change based on what we talked about this evening?
It sounds like, um-
Would be, would it be more condensed than it is now? Or would it be the same? Cause you, you basically have to have the motion, I'm guessing, in the paper, and that's what you say we have.
But we typically publish more, more than that. We could be in compliance with the law very easily with much briefer publication.
Here's my point, I guess.
We haven't been.
If you look at the condensed minutes that are published in the paper, it's basically just the motions.
My point is, we got a lot of stuff to talk about this evening. I think if we go ahead, you know, I would call a motion on this because I think it'd be up to George and other Board members to talk about this with the administrator in terms of exactly what we wanna do. It gives them a little bit of leeway room, whether in fact we're gonna continue publishing or not. But in this way, at least we can continue on some sort of path here and get some cost savings going. I would, I would like to call a motion on this one and then leave it up to George and his conversations with maybe the administrator staff and see if we do wanna continue publishing them in the paper.
Well, why, I have the issue then, if we're going to continue publishing the condensed version, and it's the very last sentence, website, and in at least three public places.
Yes.
We're not doing that now. And now you're creating even more work. And so if you were to leave that off, I'd-
I truly don't think we need the motion if we're gonna continue to publish. I, I, I think that the resolution is the Board's backing of not publishing. But if we're, if the Board thinks, feels that they want to continue publishing it in the paper regardless of how condensed it is, then the, the resolution really-
I, I also think, I don't know what the time, the, the labor cost is in terms of condensing our meeting minutes, but I think there's some time associated with that.
You already condense it, don't you, Becky?
I do.
Is there any way that you can condense them even more? Because now it's busy.
No, but what I'm saying is, would you condense them if we aren't gonna publish them?
I wouldn't necessarily-
If we're not gonna publish them in the newspaper, would you condense them? That's the question.
I wouldn't have to, no.
So.
I guess what I would say about the condensing is, I haven't had an opportunity to really fully explore what the county is doing in terms of their condensed version. There may be some further condensing that can be done. But as I mentioned, I basically take out most of the discussion with the exception of things like when we have people who come and, and comment. Those types of things I generally leave in.
It just seems to me we got something else for somebody to do to condense the meeting minutes.
Well, I'm thinking we got somebody else to do to go post them up in the, you know, public areas.
Yeah, but they're driving around the community anyway. Jump out of the cab, post it, and you're on your way. Most of them are right up there by the Public Works building anyway. I don't know, I call a motion, but we can vote on it.
All right, we're gonna vote on the resolution as it's stated. If you see, your vote yes or no will indicate whether we pursue this any further. If we say, if the vote is yes, then we will follow this. Now therefore be it resolved as it's written. If you vote no, then what we can do is go back and rework it and come up with something that would be a little bit better, based on this discussion.
But let's be clear, this resolution does not prohibit publishing minutes.
What this resolution says, though, is in at least three public places likely to give notice to persons affected. And that's what concerns me, too. That's the part that says to me, we're creating more, actually, we're creating more work.
And I would guess, just point out that the, the resolution is titled that it's a resolution directing posting in lieu of newspaper publication. So that to me says, we are in effect saying that we aren't really, I mean, it doesn't say you can't, but I think what we're saying is that we aren't going to.
That's the other piece of this. I'm going to exercise a privilege here and ask for a roll call vote so that we are sure that we get the votes. We record the votes accurately. I'll start this time with Stan.
No.
Darryl?
Wow, feels like we're parsing words here, so I'm gonna vote no.
I also vote no. Joe?
I'm gonna vote yes.
Okay. Colleen?
No.
I'd say the no is have it in this case. Thank you. Come back, we might revisit this at a later date. Doug?
I lose again.
We're looking for trying to save a buck. You know what I mean?
No problem.
I know. All right. Next on the agenda is the Plan Commission.
The Plan Commission did not meet in October.
Thank you very much. Reports like that. And next is Personal, Personnel and Finance Committee, and we have some recommendations here. Finance Committee met, seems like yesterday, but it was at six o'clock today. And we do have some claims.
And I move the Board approve the October two thousand and ten non-recurring claims totaling eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-one cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the bills that, before you? Because this is a spending item, we'll take a roll call and we'll start this time with Colleen.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
George, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B is the proposed two thousand and eleven budget. And I know you have a massive amount of paper in front of you. And I know you have a massive amount of paper in front of you. This is, as you can see from the date, the, today's printing of the budget. You have two documents, one is the detail and one is the brief. And then you'll also see the public notice, or the notice of public hearing regarding this budget. We do have a couple of minor corrections to make, but I'm gonna turn it over to Gloria. We had our practice run through on this at our Finance Committee meeting. So Gloria, you wanna take it away?
Well, after the board has met several times, gone through line by line each department and, and made recommendations in order to keep a zero increase on the levy, we've come together on this budget and it, it does just exactly that. It's, it's a small decrease from last year's levy. In order to do this, the levy of 1.400, 1,417,672 is $87,207 less than what was allowed due to the storm utility fund creation, moving a percentage of Public Works' costs to the water maintenance replacement fund and an increase in health and dental contributions by the employees. I think it's a very lean budget. We've combed through everything, and I think that we really know what every fund has in it at this point and how it got there.
And when this document is published in the paper, what you're gonna see is an item that you may think is a misprint, and it's, I mean, we're down to, there is an item on here for $2. And just to give you some numbers and for the other board members who are not here for finance, if you look down at the bottom of the page, that is the notice of public hearing, just to make a couple of minor corrections. The village mill rate, based on assessed valuation for the 2010 budget was not 3.72, it's 3.90. And for the 2011 budget, it's 3.89. Now, what will have to be printed is 0.00 as far as the change. However, if you wanted to carry it out to five decimal places, it's negative 0.00257, I think it is. But we can't do that, so we're gonna say it's a 0% change. I hope the public recognizes that there will, that to come up with a budget like this requires that there will be some cutbacks in certain areas. And there's, you know, the old saying, we've, I think we have squeezed Lincoln's beard off the penny with this one. I'll open it up for any questions or discussion. We can go into as much detail as the board or the public would like. There will be a hearing, that's another item for discussion, but we're planning it hopefully for November 30th, and at which time, oh, it's right on the top here. Do we need a board motion on that, or can we just?
I have a couple, just a couple of comments.
Let me just state that the, the meeting will be on November 30th at 5:30, right here in this very hall, for public input, at which time we will then adopt the, hopefully adopt the budget. Joe?
Just a couple of questions is, everybody on the board knows this. I think people in the audience should know the, the amount of work that the staff does to, to account for all of these budgetary items. There's a lot of work that goes into it, and, and I for one really appreciate it. It really helps us out. I think it really helps the community out where we have such a good accounting program that we know where the money is spent, where the money is going, and how much we're gonna need the next year. It, it has always been difficult, but it gets better every year. And I think that's a credit to our staff and particularly our administrative staff. So, I wanted to say that. I think that, I think, I think the board and, and everybody has done a good job on this budget because we're holding it down to a, if you look at the tax levy, it's, it's, I think it's, it's less than $500 increase. It's a $485 increase in the tax levy from, decrease in the tax levy. Sorry, sorry, sorry. And, yeah, from one year to the next. And, and so, we're spending less of the, less of the residents' dollars in 2011. Not a lot, but some at least. It certainly isn't going up. And that, that is, that is a credit, I think, to this, the, the staff that we have here in terms of managing their budgets and controlling the costs. An area where I think we need improvement is in the debt service. And we've talked about this as a Finance Committee and a board. We have been taking loans out for minor items like automobiles and trucks and, and other things. And so, our indebtedness, it isn't increasing a great deal, but it's increasing, and we'd rather see that start to decrease. And so, there's some things that we should try to do in future years in terms of depreciation accounts or whatever it is for these items. But nonetheless, you know, we are spending somewhat $40,000 more in the budget this year for debt service. On the other hand, is if you look at our general fund balance, at the end of the year, end of 2011, if we stick to this budget, we should have 72,000, roughly 72,000 or 70, 71.5, if you really want to get closer, somewhat over $70,000 more in our general fund than we started the year with. And that just means, you know, that fund has grown a little bit, and it's good to have it there. That will help us, you know, if we have to go out for bonds or any kind of, any, anything, or financing in the future. So, that is certainly in the right direction. So, I, I would just like to make those kind of comments to the board and to the public. This is a tight budget. I think, I, I, I think that the administrative staff has done a very fine job for us.
Is there anyone who would like to second that?
That's not a motion.
I'm looking at it from the, almost the poetic way. I second that.
But if we need a motion to adopt this, or whatever it is, do we need a motion this evening?
We don't need a motion to adopt the budget because it needs to be posted for two weeks and then-
Yeah, we just have a-
We'll have the public hearing.
Yeah, we have approval requested. I don't know what that means.
It's more proving me to publish it, that this is what you want published.
Do you need a motion for that? Do you need a motion for that?
Sure.
Okay, well, I move that we have, we have this budget published, the proposed 2011 budget published.
Second.
Any further discussion? We have talked, or I mentioned that we had the abbreviated form, and then we had an expanded form. This expanded form is 42 pages long. And I learned a week or so ago from Gloria that this is actually an abbreviated form. And if anybody wanted to check, we have a record of literally every dollar that was spent this year. Now, we got the detail, and I think, Darryl, the, what was the term you used before? Transparent government?
Transparency.
Transparency. We are about as transparent as you can possibly get. And so, with that, I will just ask for a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to give Gloria approval to publish this document? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you very much. Item C, I would move to table this discussion. We had it on here, but we don't have enough information yet, so I will move to table item C. Can I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor of tabling, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Item D here is, Joe just finished talking about our indebtedness, and then we move right into a resolution authorizing Gloria to borrow money for capital equipment purchases. This is for the squad car, the truck, the bodies on the truck, and for some budgeting software that is already in use. And so, this is a required formality. And so, I would ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 2010-11.
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 2010-11.
Thank you, Colleen. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? This is a spending iss-, I'll call this a spending issue, right?
Yep.
We'll start with Stan this time?
Yes.
Darryl?
Yes.
George, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is a kind of strange and convoluted description of what we're going to do, but Gloria did an absolutely outstanding and amazing job with this. It's item E, a write-off of an escrow fee. We have Tom here, too. Do we want to have any, do you want to have a brief, a brief discussion about this? Basically, it's that there was an overpayment on the part of Dean Hanson. And we had a motion, if I recall. An underpayment. Okay. Joe, do you want to read that? You made the motion before, or?
Did I? How long is the motion?
Where is that? Becky, can you, do you hold that?
Did I, did I make the motion and it's not in here?
I think it was...
Joe made the motion, Darryl seconded.
It was at Finance.
Yeah, it was item number seven in Finance. So, whopping $250.
I think the motion was basically just to, the motion to approve the write-off. That was basically what it was, how stated. There wasn't a lot of-
Okay, yeah. I probably said something like, so move, or something like that. I, I don't know if it gets, it's probably worthwhile mentioning that we, we were involved in some negotiation in terms of a bill. The city picked up some of it. I think the firm that we were doing, that was doing the work for us, picked up some of it. And what remained was $250. And the city picked up a large portion, much more than we did. And so, we said, you know, let's just pick up the $250 on this bill and have it over with. And so, that was the motion that I made, is let's pay that bill.
Joe, you've used the word city several times. City Hudson wasn't involved with this at all. This is the village.
Okay, I thought, okay, well then.
Developer, Mr. Hanson.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I had Dean Knutson on my mind because, because of the election. Sorry. Sorry.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but-
Well, you should've.
Yeah, I know. It's not easy, Joe.
I know.
You know, when you get on a roll here. All right.
Sorry.
That's perfectly all right. So, you made that motion, and if I recall, Darryl seconded it. Did you want to second it again?
Has he made it?
I, I think so. It was to write off the $250.
I'll second the write-off of the $250.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, guys.
The reason I jumped in is because nobody else would.
Joe, I'm glad to hear that you took it for the team.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. I want a plaque.
Hey, chief, can you write him a plaque? We'll have it to you on the-
Yeah, sometime in the future. That'll be a parking ticket.
Oh, that was good, Mike.
I heard there was a two-hour, there was a two-hour limit on parking out there.
I'm probably close to the fire hydrant out there. Concerned.
That portable one that we can move around just to generate revenue. This is a spending issue, a quasi-spending issue, but just to be on the safe side, Colleen, you want to start us off?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
George, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, good. Public Works. Darryl, you want to take it from here?
Yes. Item A is very short. I have no update, pertinent items to report. B is the res- resolution that now adopts the stormwater utility charges. And we had earlier talked about that and made reference to a quarterly charge that is encapsulated in the resolution. I don't think it's necessary to read the entire resolution, but, Mr. President, I will move approval of Resolution Number 2010-13, which is a resolution to adopt stormwater utility charges.
Would you want to just, for the record, just indicate what those charges are?
Which we have computed to be $7 per equivalent runoff unit per quarter.
Thank you. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stan. We have, I think, discussed this quite in, in a lot of detail, but if you have a further question or comment that you'd like to make, now's a good time before we vote. It's a resolution, so this, so we'll take a roll call vote. We'll start this time with Stan.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
We had a little discussion early, or just earlier, about how we go into debt. And Darryl, you want to talk about the next opportunity to get into more debt?
There's a segue for you.
Well, we talked in Finance about a couple of the capital projects that we've identified for 2011. And we've talked about these in, in Public Works Committee and have brought some preliminary recommendation to the board. So, these are capital items that are pending for, for 2011. We are recommending that we include in the budget the, these two capital projects. And if they would, if they would be done in 2011, then that's where the debt comes in. We would appropriately go out and borrow for these capital projects. So, it would be a revenue stream into the budget and expense out of the budget. So, the amount is budget neutral from that standpoint. Having said that, and you're right, we have talked about this at length in terms of the posture of the debt that we've got in the village. I think we're all on board that we want to begin appropriately to anticipate capital projects instead of incrementally borrowing for them. Having said all of that, I will recommend, I will move that the board approve the Station Lane, Station Circle road improvement project next year at a cost not to exceed $148,500.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
I'll second.
I heard Stan first.
Okay, fine.
Give this one to Stan. Just a comment on this before we vote. If we follow through on this project and we borrow the money for it, this is one of those where the residents will be paying, the residency affected, the affected residents in that neighborhood will be paying for half of it. And we borrow money for this as well as for the sidewalk improvement, which will be the next one that we talk about. The first payment won't be until 2012. By 2012, one of the loans that we have will have been finished and paid off. So, we pay one off, and then we, we get on another one. When I talked to Darryl about this earlier this evening, I said to him, "Boy, you're gonna have to do a hard sell on this one for me." And he said, "If we don't do it now, we're gonna have to do it the next year." Because we have road, that, that portion of road is deteriorating. And we have, and I talked to Mark Egblad, our director, our commissioner, our superintendent of Public Works, and he said, "We've got sidewalks now that are hazardous, and there have been people who have fallen, tripping over some of these raised pieces of sidewalk." That having been said, I am in support of taking care of doing the maintenance that we are required to do for our residents. Anybody else? Joe?
I just have a comment. I'm, I'm not sure that Darryl mentioned this, but it bears repeating if he did. Approval of this-
Approval of this just allows us to put it in the budget.
Exactly.
It allows Gloria to put it in the budget. It's not approving these projects, either the sidewalk or this road improvement project. It's just so we can put it in the budget. There'll be plenty of time and plenty of other motions that are related to both these projects that'll be coming out of Public Works, that'll be coming to the full board. We'll have public hearings on the road improvement projects. So this is not a stamp of approval on the board that says we're gonna do this. There's plenty of time to say, "Yes, we're going to, hopefully we will." But other comments from the public on both of these projects will influence the decision.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? All right. Is this really spending? Do we, should I do a roll call anyway?
Might as well be safe.
Yeah. Never hurts. Okay, Colleen.
Yes.
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 Darrell, sidewalks?
And the second piece of the 2011 identified capital projects would be the reference sidewalk repairs. There is a significant list of items, and I think that has been distributed for your review. That has been compiled by Director Egblatt, and we have also talked about this at some length in Public Works. And the same thing, we are recommended this be included in the budget so that we've got it for the possibility in 2011. There will be additional kicks at this can, as Joe phrased it. I guess he didn't use those words, but the process is the same. So, Mr. President, I would, I would move the inclusion in the 2011 Village Budget of sidewalk repair in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Further discussion? I'm just gonna hold this up. This is a listing of all the locations where the sidewalks have been deemed to be hazardous and need to be repaired. It's quite an extensive list, so... Any further discussion? Start with you this time, Stan.
Yes.
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 Okay. Is there anything else that you would like to say regarding Public Works this evening, Darrell?
None whatsoever.
Then, Joe, you're on for public safety.
No comment, no chair update.
Yeah. Public welfare. Colleen, is there anything that, do you wanna comment on public welfare?
Yeah. Jim asked me to remind the residents about the upcoming curb pickup, curbside pickup for leaf, which will be, it needs to be out prior to 6:00 AM Monday, November 8th, in approved compostable bags. Leaf pickup will be completed by Wednesday, November 11th. Also, an update from the deer management program. The aerial helicopter, aerial count of the deer population will be held after it snows. So far, they have harvested thirteen deer, which have all been donated to family or to people. I think there was five in North Hudson and the rest to other residents nearby. There've been seven adultos, six yearling antlerless deers. That's all I had to say.
Okay. Can I have your turn again?
No, may I turn again for parks? Not too much on this either. We are postponing the Chief Jans Memorial Park dedication until springtime, since there was some difficulty getting everything completed in time for October. And given the weather that weekend, it was probably a good thing that we didn't have it, when we had this planned. Also, we will continue to work on the grant application for the railroad, developing the railroad property. We are planning on having a skating rink again this season.
Skating rink, huh? Terry gonna be helping us flood that thing? All right. Oh, you mean we have to wait till the ground freezes?
Actually, one more thing. Webster Park, Dr. Mr. Smith, the principal of North Hudson, and they're going, they're coming up with some plans of what they'd like, how they would like to improve that park, including the removal of buckthorn. And I told them that there is some money in our park development fund that we may be able to help with that. They plan on coming, representatives plan on coming to our January meeting to let us know what their plans are.
Be nice to clean that up.
But I think that's very good for, well, the village and for the students. That's it.
Very good, thank you. Does Village Clerk have anything to add or need any clarification or anything before we adjourn?
I don't think so.
Okay. I see our Commissioner of Public Works is wiggling his finger, indicating he has something he'd like to say.
Please let the board know that the Public Works meeting for November as a council.
I'm the one that gets stuck behind the door.
Two hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. You get stuck quite often.
Gloria?
Anything you wanna say before?
All right. Well, thank you very much, everybody. And in light of the fact that Mr. Zap is not with us tonight, I will adjourn the meeting.